Select Board meeting to order for Monday, November 27th, 2023. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join me in the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to point out that before we get started for public comment, that we are going to be going into executive session following the public meeting, and we will be not returning to open session. So just so everybody understands that. And now, public comments and announcements.
Good evening, Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. In front of each of you, I put three different posters. This is everything that is happening this coming weekend. As you're all aware, this is Christmas in Harwich weekend kicking off for the Cape. Harwich has always had the first weekend. So we start Friday night in Harwich Port with the annual stroll, 5:30 to 8:30, with the tree lighting and caroling by the Harwich Elementary School and our newly-installed Reverend Amy from Pilgrim Congregational Church. The Pilgrim Sonic Lodge are my partners with all of our Christmas trees. There are 10 throughout the seven villages, and then our one down in Dome Park as well. Fully, there's a full weekend. It's a crazy full weekend. But after a conversation, and hopefully he's listening, with our fire chief, Dave LeBlanc and his wife Marcy last year, they were down in Tennessee at a Dickens Festival, and they said to me, which if any of you are listening, please do not do this again, we should do this in Harwich, because I go down the rabbit hole and we come up with what's in front of you. We have an amazing Dickens Christmas Carol happening in Harwich Center, and thanks to the Chronicle, they've already done a great piece on us and what we're doing. But the schedule and where we are in Harwich Center is out and about throughout town, and it's just going to be amazing. Plus, East Harwich will have Santa, Mrs. Claus, and Friends. We have everything from a juggler, magician, face painter, characterist, and stiltswalker in East Harwich. Dan Missouri's going to kill me at Shell. But we're bringing everybody into all of our villages, and it's going to be amazing. Mrs. Claus is decorating Christmas cookies with children at Terry's TV and Harwich Paint and Decorating. Then we head over to the Waquasit for a full day and month-long of enchanted holiday festivities. And for anyone who wasn't aware, we moved the fireworks from Cranberry Festival to this weekend Saturday, December 2nd, easy for me to say, and we're at the Waquasit. What we have done is hired shuttles. We're highly recommending parking at the Lighthouse Charter School. Shuttles are available four to eight, and we'll have signage, so everyone will know. But the fireworks this year are at the Waquasit at Pleasant Bay. So super excited for that. Those will be at 6 o'clock. Then we will head over on Sunday to a holiday parade. The cast of our Dickens Christmas Carol will be there, as well as both Saturday and Sunday in Brooks Park are vendors and food trucks. There's a full listing of all of the amazing festivities that are happening throughout the town. This is just the new highlights. There's a long list on our website featuring everything from the Garden Club, the 204, somebody else I'm going to miss, but everything's out there. So I would love to stay, but your Christmas elf needs to get back to her workshop. I'm not quite done yet.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
No, you've done so much once again, so I can only say thank you so much for all the work you put into this great town.
Well, I hope you'll all be around, because it is going to be absolutely amazing. And I have wonderful sponsors and donors. If you follow us on Facebook, please look, because I posted it today. This was not in the budget. This was not on my radar. But after that conversation and after meeting the wonderful producer that I have and director, I hate this, that I say it all the time, but it's so true. I really walked the streets to get our sponsors and donors, and you guys are going to love it. So I hope you come out, and there's nothing on the Cape like it. So, good night, I'm not staying.
Thank you, Cindy. Amy?
Good evening, Amy Usowski, Conservation Administrator. I wanted to let everybody know that starting December, our AmeriCorps member Margaret will be leading monthly educational walks for the public. She started with us in September and has done a great job coming up to speed, and is really excited and wants people to come out. So on Tuesday, December 5th, at 10:00 a.m., and this is on the town website, under the Events page, she's going to be hosting a winter beach walk at Red River Beach, and is to talk about the differences between a summer beach and a winter beach, both in the species of plants and animals that inhabit the area, as well as the coastal geology and how that changes in the wintertime versus the summertime. So if people want to sign up, it is free, and it's about an hour long at Red River Beach, and it, sign up is on the town website. And each month, she's going to do something a little bit different.
Great. That's cool. Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Carolyn.
How are y'all? Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. And I just wanted to let you know, we have quite a few things happening for December. First, November 30th, actually, is our bingo night, Free Bingo, for the whole family. Come on out and enjoy. Next, if you do participate, there is a large mailbox that was dropped off by the North Pole, and there are letters to Santa. And if you get them in before the 13th, I hear there's a good chance Santa writes back.
Wow.
That's at the community center. In addition to that, we also have the mitten tree, which is back in person and live, not just online this year. And those mittens are for children in the Cape Cod area, most are local, who without our help would not have a holiday. So if you can pick up a mitten, please do so. I know people are so generous, but we have those mittens, and all the information is on our site and in the building. That's not the happy news. Well, it's happy, because we're all going to get them, great things, but. Sound Dunes, our holiday concert, December 6th, free concert from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Then on December 7th, we're making ornaments. This is an adult workshop. We do have stuff for kids coming up, but this is an adult workshop. Then by popular demand, Grab a Bow is back. Simple concept, you walk in, there's a large box, reach in, take out a bow, every bow is a winner. Not saying what you're going to win, but you're going to win. That's on December 11th. And then on December 15th, for the entire family, we have the Ugly Sweater Decorating Contest. You make the sweater or bring in a sweater. You can make it with us. We do have some sweaters, t-shirts, things available, but you're welcome to bring your own, and we have all the accoutrements you could possibly want for an ugly sweater contest. We are also having the December 22nd, one of our military talks. That's at 2:30. This is, the topic is the Yankee Division of World War II. Also on that evening, we're doing the Winter Solstice Drum Circle, another free event. I would be remiss if I did not tell you about where there's also a wellness fair going on, and the Town Band's Holiday Concert is on Sunday, December 17th. We don't have that day right. But all of this is on our website and stop in the community center, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Carolyn. Maybe we should go to the ugly sweater thing and have a competition.
I think we should do it right here.
I'll stay back, so you don't have a quorum.
Good evening.
I'm Robert Thomason, Oliver Snow Road, and I have some questions about the change order at the Wixon Dock.
Yep.
And I wondered if I waited around until that came up on your meeting, whether I'd have a chance to speak about it.
So we are going to be speaking about that, but I don't want to make you hang around for that. So I know you had some questions, and we have some information that we just got this afternoon. I don't know if, do you have the plans there?
I do have the plans.
Might actually answer some of your questions that you had, so I guess, I think we could do it in a fairly quick fashion, so you don't have to hang around for the change order.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Do you want to just, so if you don't mind, we're just going to sort of walk through the, and I can either go through your email, or we can just put up the plan.
Sure.
Do you want to finish public comment first, and then?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Forward.
Sorry, is anyone else here for public comment?
I just have one thing to say.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Jeff.
That's why I jumped right in. I just want to remind everybody that Wednesday night, this Wednesday night, from 5:00 to 7:00, at the 204 Building, Selectman McCaskill and I will be there to hold our office hours, and I would love to see anybody and anybody who would like to come and share what they have to say for us. So, thank you.
And actually, before I, all right, I see he's on, I was just going to make sure John was on too, so. Yeah, do you want to go ahead, Megan?
Sure, did you want to open that contract?
Yeah, so, all right, we'll just move it up.
Okay.
So if you'd go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, sure. I move that we approve, wait, let me make sure I have where I need to be here.
You're right, under contracts, under A.
Under A. I move that we approve and authorize the chair to sign. Change order number one for Wixon Landing Improvement Project in the amount of $3,400.
Second for discussion.
Great, moved and seconded. And so, Megan, if you don't mind.
Some of the questions that came up through your email this afternoon, I was able to pull up the plans, and you had wondered about public access to the water that didn't involve going over the new wall. And there is a new permeable walkway path to the south of that new wall that allows access by foot. It's wide enough to bring a kayak down to the water. It is where the boat rail will be as well. Another question you had had was parking, and it is true that some of the parking spaces will be gone because of the new barrier, and that is because the barrier is there for erosion control, among other things. And if we had kept it there, cars would continue to park down along the high-water mark, both dangerous for the car and the environment if we continue to allow cars to park that close to the water's edge. This riprap is about three to four feet wide. The Jersey Barrier is buried, you'll only see about six inches of it from the parking lot. It's there to anchor that boulder riprap, as well as the new ramp. It's there as a secondary measure for stormwater coming down Harbor Way. Stormwater currently comes down quite fast and just enters the water untreated in any sort of way. With the new stormwater trench, as well as this barrier, we will be able to slow that stormwater down, so it doesn't enter the water as untreated as it is now. Was there another question that I'm forgetting?
I thought that was the bulk of them. Are all your questions answered by those, because those were your specifics in your email? I don't think you had any.
That's not the reason I came. I was curious as to why a change order was initiated for something like this so soon in the project where it hasn't even begun. I mean, what initiated this change?
It's a change in E-Pay decking, but I'll let John Rendon answer that question. John, do you mind speaking to the question on the $3,400 change?
Yes, absolutely. Can you hear me okay, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you're fine, we can hear you.
Okay, so, I mean, we bid to spec based upon the initial engineering design of it. We had some questions from some of the abutters and some of the interested parties of wanting to make that gangway strictly out of timber. I didn't agree with that from a longevity standpoint. Some of the concerns were the noise of it, with the public coming up and down, and the aesthetics of it. So I thought one of the compromises was to replace the decking, the aluminum decking with tropical hardwood, which we have the same E-Pay tropical hardwood at the Marina that I'm suggesting for this. I didn't change it in the initial design, because I wasn't sure how the bids were going to be and whether we'd be within budget. So I held off. Now we have an opportunity, because we have some funding available, to make that change. So that's, if there's any questions about that, I can answer.
Thank you, John. Any questions?
It's just upsetting to me that the concerns of the abutter, about noise on the dock, outweigh the concerns of the residents who use the area. And it seems like this whole project has been driven by the neighbor, and the public's right to use the water has been jeopardized. And it's very discouraging.
So the process has been an open process with multiple public input hearings, et cetera, and so there's been a lot of input from the public, and I believe that there's been a lot of feedback given back to the public. So I feel, and even this evening, we tried to address the questions you brought up in your additional emails. So I know that you have had many different questions, and I feel that the town has been responsive. It's unfortunate that you feel that way, but we can't please every single person in town. We're actually making the accessibility better all around, including for the environment.
And Madam Chair, I'd like to just address that, you know, the initial request didn't come from that immediate abutter about the gangway wanting to be timber and changing the aesthetics and the access. So Mr. Thomason seems to think that everything I'm doing with this project has to do with that single abutter, and that couldn't be further from the truth. He, you know, I've addressed this with him time and time again, and, you know, no matter what we say is going to satisfy him.
Thank you, John. So we've got a, and so that's all the comment we're going to take at this point.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, Michael?
Yeah, I would publicly like to thank Mr. Thomason for being, every conversation I've had with him, he's been very respectful. A lot of questions, to Julie's point, we all don't always get what we want, but you've always been very respectful when you've spoken, either by phone and not heard what you wanted to hear, or in a public meeting, so thank you. To John Rendon, I think that this change order is a great change order, having had aluminum gangways and wood, and I think the natural beauty of that landing, and for those of us that enjoy having our coffee down there or fishing down there, I think it's going to make an aesthetic change to that landing as well. So I support it.
Thank you, Michael. Jeff, do you have any comment?
No.
Okay, so, no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three, zero, obviously. And since John is on vacation, why don't we take care of B as well, so if John can go?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we approve the following three-year mooring servicing agent license agreements. Number one, Allen Harbor Marine Service Incorporated servicing Allen Harbor Mooring Field. Number two, Harwich Port Boatyard Incorporated servicing Witchmere Inner and Outer Harbor Mooring Fields. And number three, Lower Cape Marine Services servicing Round Cove, Pleasant Bay, and Herring River Mooring Fields.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John.
Yes, ma'am, thanks so much, appreciate it.
Enjoy the rest of your vacation. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go back in order to the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to go a little out of order here. I move that we accept a gift from Aura Gaylord, a Ruth Trust for the community center in the amount of $13,060, and I move that we approve the select board meeting minutes for November 20th, 2023.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, for the record, if I may, for the next consent agenda item, I'd like to state that I met with Martha Duffy, the committee chair for the golf committee, maybe three weeks ago. And as always, it was a productive and very satisfying conversation with Martha. She's an all-star. At that time, I was made aware that Michelle Ryan was considering resignation from the golf committee. For the record, I would like to make known that I asked Martha to speak with Michelle on my behalf and request that she wait until this meeting would occur prior to her resignation, as I felt, and I still feel, that Michelle is an incredible asset to our town, our volunteer pool, and I am just sorry to see her go. I do understand somewhat why she is sending in this letter of resignation, but I would like to thank Michelle for being part of the golf committee for the period of time that she was on the golf committee. I would like her to potentially consider reapplying to the golf committee when things settle down a little bit. And to that end, I move that we vote to accept the resignation of Michelle Ryan from the golf committee effective immediately.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, and you have anything?
I would echo Jeff's comments, and I do agree with several of her points in the resignation and understand the frustration. This board has been dealing with this for two and a half to three years. And, you know, to see that resignation put up on Harwich old timers and be tried in the court of Sandra Hall's own opinion, you know, it's almost like a sitcom at this point, when you get sent clips from Harwich old timers with half the information. And I'll speak more to this when we bring up the subject, but two and a half years, several members of the golf committee gone, the board put in a position where it's going to support its employees, which depending on Sandra's mood at that time, she'll either crucify us for employees leaving, or in this case, crucify us because we're protecting the employees. So the only one in the group that's lost their mind, and I'm quoting her, is Sandra Hall herself. And I hope that the public really pays attention to what's going on on these social media sites, because it is destroying this town. And people wonder why we are losing employees and committee members, and why only one person will run for a board of selectmen seat. It's because of that nonsense. They can blame it as internally as they want, but Michelle Ryan's resignation was put up for a reason. And from the phone calls that I got, from the people that were upset about it, I thank them for recognizing that she has lost her mind and is trying to control this town through a social media platform. It's a disgrace. And on this most recent post, she used the word diddling. And I'm not sure about all the residents of this town and what we're trying to teach our kids, but her reference to the board of selectmen diddling the golf committee, she should be ashamed of herself, and as far as I'm concerned, should not be allowed to be on our charter review committee. That is our governing document of our town, that she's so hardly trying, so, working so hard to change herself because she's not controlling the board and the employees, and it's driving her crazy. So I took offense to the diddling comment, and to some of the out-of-towners, the Florida residents that are commenting on that, just to get their name on a comment thread. I think if you look at the lack of comments on that post, you should be ashamed of yourselves too.
Thank you, Michael. And I would agree, there's been a lot of work put into trying to right the ship. Don was the liaison to the golf committee, I think, for the last, prior to Jeff, for the last year or two, so, I mean, and here we are, still dealing with this. So we've got.
I have a motion and a second to accept the resignation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Onto new business.
I move, yes?
Yeah, no, good.
Thank you. I move that we reduce the number of members on the Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee from seven to five.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
Can we add to the motion to remove the alternates as well? We've right now got seven members and two alternates, as brought forward last year, I think is when we did it. And right now, this move will give the committee at least the ability to meet.
Meet, yeah, okay.
To discuss whether or not we continue with this committee.
Yeah.
And for further discussion, I'd like to ask Selectman Howell, given that he's the liaison, to get together with that committee to review the current charge. In interviewing two of the folks that resigned from that committee, they said there was nothing to do, and that all of the work in the charge had been completed by DPW and already exists. So there was a great frustration about meeting to talk, to take no actions.
Yeah, and you raised another good point, is that in terms of, Megan, you serve as the.
ADA coordinator.
Thank you. So, I mean, we do have somebody who's able to make sure that we're meeting certain criteria.
I'll ask if we could just add a removal of the two alternates to the motion?
Sure.
I believe that's exactly what my motion.
Yeah, which my second.
That's what I thought.
And, you know, any discussion by you, Jeff? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We'll go on to discuss the request for the Conservation Administrator for a one-time increase of the expenditure limit from the Wetland Revolving Fund. Votes may be taken.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Amy Usowski, again, Conservation Administrator, and I'm joined by Conservation Commission member Brad Chase.
Good evening.
As well as Chairman John Ketchum online.
Okay.
If you'd like, I'd just go through a really brief history of how we got here and what our request is. So for the May 2022 town meeting, the Carwich Conservation Commission brought forth potential changes to the water-dependent structures by law. Water-dependent structures are things like docks, piers, seawalls, things like that. The, this did not move forward, in large in part because of public comments that a study should be done first before changing regulations to determine whether or not impacts to wetlands from said structures are actually happening. So the commission took that to heart and has worked really hard over the past year and a half to come up with that language. Brad played an integral role in that, as well as members from the Cape Cod Commission, as well as the Cape Cod Cooperative Extension, in drafting what in my mind is one of the first, if not the first of its kind, types of studies that we wish to do. Typically, studies like this only look at one parameter, like impacts to salt marsh, they don't look at impacts to shellfish. They don't look at other parameters that we're proposing to do. So what we're proposing is we have a wetlands revolving account that was set by this board and town meeting back in about 2016. It's composed, the money that comes in is from the town's portion of the state fee for wetlands, for the notice of intent, and by law, these funds can only be used for the purpose of holding the Wetlands Protection Act. And actually, the language, it also includes this fund can be used for independent studies. So that's what we would like to use it for. We currently had a cap of $6,000 a year, and I believe that amount came, because on average, during an average annual year, that's what is generated in this fund. We've been accumulating it for several years now. So in any way, we released the RFP, we received three bids, two of which were deemed very, to be very qualified to do the study. Ultimately, the commission chose TRC Company as their desired consulting firm and scientist to do this. It was a sealed bid process, we had estimated it was going to be over $50,000, so they were really just ranked on experience, and TRC was above and beyond. And when we have about, we have $85,795 in the fund, and the bid came in at $72,640. So this study is going to look at all literature studies as well, over the history of projects such like, or studies such as this, to compile them. It's going to look at, it's going to do field studies of up to 38-plus study sites on the river, which we would have to coordinate with homeowners if there was to be access other than via the water to their properties. other than via the water to their properties. It's it's a unique situation, I think, and we have an opportunity to really understand the health of our wetland resources in the marine part of the Herring River. And we're also going to be going to the FinCom in two weeks, I believe. We would love your support in allowing us to spend $72,640 to have the study done to help us better regulate in the future and better understand what's happening. Do you have anything to add?
I don't think so. I think I'm here to assist with questions if any come up.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? Michael?
Go ahead, go ahead. Thank you both for being here. I I have a couple, just so I can gain a little bit more knowledge on the subject. The regulations for docks, we're building new docks. That changed how long ago?
There were some modest changes back in 2022. And that was really to things such as the spacing between the decking from one-half inch to three-quarter inch to allow more light penetration as well as the height over this that it has to be if it's over salt marsh, which is one and a half times the width. So smaller changes such as that, which were pretty much in line with what the state is requiring anyways now.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So it's, I'm sorry, go ahead, please. Oh, yeah, please, of course.
Excuse me. The commission at the time had voted to actually ban new docks on Herring River.
The moratorium, if I remember.
That proved controversial, and so that was pulled out, I think, with the idea that a future study would be conducted. And what advanced was meaningful and important, but there was mostly tuning of existing regulations to reduce impacts.
So it'd be safe to say that it's a little too early in the game to determine whether or not the specific changes with the docks, the building of the new structures, has really helped the marsh any since it's really only been about a year? Or have you seen some significant positive changes to the marsh because of those new docks and the regulations that were put in place?
I can't speak like directly to it right now because it is so new and it takes years for things to adapt. But the reason why the state made those changes is, you know, the height-to-width especially ratio was because in their studies and their review that they had seen less density in salt marshes where you had a lower structure to the marsh. So that's why they recommended raising it up when you're over salt marsh. So there have been studies, not as comprehensive, but there have been studies out there. And that's why those they suggest those parameters.
Thank you. Another one, if I may?
Sure.
There are docks and then there are over marsh
Yep.
walking structures.
Correct.
All of this is going to be looked at or just the over marsh walking walking structures?
Everything. So we have a lot of walkways, our boardwalks over marsh. And some of them end, and there may be a ladder, there may not be. Those are also basically structured by a beyond mean high water. And it does specifically say walkway in the RFP.
Right, that's the reason for my question.
We want to kind of take a holistic look at this. And there's also going to be study sites where sites that have no structures that are going to be used. And it's ultimately going to be about half and half to try to get a real feel for it, not just study the ones that have structures.
Yep. I count roughly about 145 overwater structures on the Herring River. Does that sound about right to you all?
Seems more than I'd expect.
Okay.
Including revetments and that type of structure as well.
Okay. How many, let's 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 do it this way, then. Out of the total, how many new docks under the new dock regulations have been built?
Under the, since 2022?
Since 2022. I'm just trying to get a feel for where we're going.
But I mean, prior to that, the commission
Two, maybe.
Yeah, probably about two.
Two. Are there any impending in process right now?
There's an application in front of the commission right now.
So there's two and then one that's pending right now?
It's a joint application. It's an application for a joint dock between two property owners.
Okay. And then my last question, if I may, Madam Chair, is it the the board's conclusion that overwater structures are actually harmful to the salt marsh?
I think that's what the study is trying, it is trying to determine.
And I would add, I think it's case by case. It depends where you're built, your sun orientation, where you are, what side of the river you're on, how high you are above the marsh. It's very case by case. And I think the study will probably show where impacts occur and where they they don't occur. So I think it'll be useful in that regard.
Yeah, so I'm I'm happy that you're doing this and I'm I'm really interested to see the outcome. But confirmation bias for me is something that I've always looked out for. And if this is something that we're seeking to use to just solidify what you already feel, then I know you well enough, Amy. I'm going to take your work on it and I I'm happy we're looking into this.
It could go opposite in certain instances. We know that some shellfish, such as oysters, tend to be attracted to harder structures. So it may be better for certain things. It's not, it's what we want, and I think the way hopefully we phrased it in the RFP was weren't trying to be biased in any way. We want to see what, if any, positive or negative impacts there could be.
Yeah, I I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
I'd just add that I I think it's a fair concern to have because the commission at the time was very much focused on concern for these existing structures impacts. Myself, I feel it's it's obvious in many cases.
Sure.
Particularly on the west side of Herring River, those docks have impacted numerous resources we should be protecting. So for me, I have great concerns over these things. I think the right step is to have this type of study, have public discussion, have public specific hearings on the study and and see what people think.
That's fantastic, and I appreciate that. And as you and I were looking the other day, the certain pruning on that west side tends to help the marsh. And I'd like to also take a look at what homeowners on the on the on the river could do to facilitate the improvement of the health of the marsh by way of pruning and some other things that we could possibly do to improve our marsh quality. So thank you. That's all from me, Madam Chair.
Okay, Michael?
Thank you for bringing this forward. I remember the the debate and how how opposite sides people were on this. Which leads me to, I know this was what we all talked about, and I know the number one complaint from the engineers that were involved was the fact that there was no data. So this sounds like we're going to have the data to have the conversation. If memory serves me correct, there was only five docks capable of being built on Herring River at that time. There's only five left that could possibly
That was a rough estimation. There's not that many more spots.
Which brings me to on this, so task two. The sample size should target at least eight docks per treatment with an overall total of approximately 20 docks. Can you just tell me what that means?
So, go ahead, if you let me.
Let me take a stab at that?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so we're looking to have treatments that cover existing docks as well as habitats that are not impacted. So we're looking for somewhat of a random scientific approach to looking at these different types. So
This, sorry.
I was going to say, and to get a sample size would allow for analysis to show differences. So that's that's where that target
So it's only going to be about 20 docks?
No, the proposed, so TRC went above and beyond without being asked and has done has said at least 38, of which half will be a study site, meaning no, there's nothing there. And the other, if there's even that many, and the other half would be ones with water-dependent structures.
Okay. The current docks that are already on the river, and I appreciate this says basically for future town meeting by law change that would be voted, obviously, the commission would use it to create the next article that you would want on this. How would this change current docks, people that already have docks, they're already in place? Does it change on the rebuild process if they if they came in and wanted to rebuild it? Or are we going to tell them to take it down?
It's certainly not the intention, we've never had that discussion, to take them existing ones down. It would, just like now, when we see docks, because a lot of a lot of the really old docks were built even before any recent standards, on the practically on the salt marsh bottom. So the intention would be is if you have an existing permitted licensed dock, if you were to rebuild it, try to come as close as you can to compliance with new standards as you possibly can, understanding that you were licensed and permitted for that other structure.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy, and thank the commission for all the work they did on this. Obviously, a lot went into it. Glad to see something come out of a debate that didn't necessarily go the same way others wanted it to go. So thank you.
Yeah, I and, you know, in looking through all the materials and obviously the firm is well-qualified. They've been around quite some time. And, you know, when I look at it, I know that in permitting catwalks and and chatham and such, and there are some scenarios where that's actually better for the marsh because you've not got the foot traffic going over the marsh, but, you know, you're above it and you've got the spacing to let the light in. And to your point, sometimes the shellfish are appreciating that it's there. So back to the discussion we had when this came up, it was, you know, all about having a study done. So thank you for being proactive and looking into having that study done because it is your and this board's authority to make sure that the water quality also was protected and that, you know, if there's different ways we can be looking at vegetation to improve the overall quality of the marsh and the river, then then that's everybody in this room's job. So, thank you.
One more, please.
Yeah.
Back to the Wixen Dock, the south side of the dock. I was there a little while ago. It looks marshy. It looks, okay. That's the area where I believe, and this is from my own knowledge, you helped me with this, if you don't mind. Thank you for your email today. That's the area where the riprap, not the riprap, the
Paver.
Yeah, the paver is is going
Pathway.
The pathway
Yep.
is being moved from the south side, I'm sorry.
From the north side.
From the north side to the south side
Yep.
over and intruding through that marsh.
No.
Okay, this is, and and I, just in in all transparency, I asked for a rendering because I'm coming into this a little late to the game. So I just want to understand it all. Thank you again. So, please.
So I would say, so you could probably construe it as partially upper marsh, meaning above mean high water. So at no point will there be pervious paver walkway below the mean high tide line within the marsh that sees tidal action every day. And I don't have the plan right in front of me. But once you get off that pervious paver walkway, it just is going to be a footpath. And there currently already is a footpath worn to the water in that general location. So that was that was the plan is to remove the area, the access to the north, which is rather rather large. And marsh is trying its hardest to grow up there, and it can't. And moving it to the south side. And again, the pervious pavers are going to be above the mean high tide line.
Great. And one more, if I may, and I I'm trusting that this is still on in in the topic of the agenda item because it is the Herring River. It's going, it's a safe footpath once the pervious, the pervious pavers ends and you're speaking about a footpath that makes it to the end. That's not through the marsh. That's a safe footpath?
It is on, I don't know what it's on exactly right now. But yes, it's not, it's not, once you get to the edge where it drops off into the river, there's a drop, but it is flat. It is stable. It was looked on, looked at by our, the company who did the proposal
Great.
to, and then also looked at by Waterways and Conservation.
And that was my last question, is the company that's doing the proposal is going to look at, is taking into account this area of the Herring River as well? Thank you.
And certainly, if for some reason something changes and over time, if it gets overused and things get worn down and we need to address that, we'll address that.
Thank you so much. Perfect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Brad. Oh, Michael?
I move that we approve the request from the Conservation Administrator for one-time increase of the expenditure limit from the Wetland Revolving Fund from $6,000 to $72,640.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You, too. Okay, next.
Let us see.
Yes, please.
I move that we approve the following Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 15, off-premise annual, excuse me, liquor license renewals. Born Petroleum Limited, DBA Harwich Exxon, 173 Pleasant Lake Avenue. Pizza Shark Partners, DBA Pizza Shark, 403 Pleasant Lake Avenue.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I move that we approve the following Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 12, on-premise annual liquor license renewals. Ember Pizza, Inc., DBA Ember, 600 Route 28. Harwich Port House of Pizza Incorporated, 330 Route 28. Round Cove Resort Beverage LLC, DBA Quocet Inn, 2173 Route 28. Shotgun, Inc., DBA Noble House, 21 Route 28. And Zack Incorporated, DBA Castaways, 986 Main Street.
Second.
Just one correction, Shogun, just so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I call it shotgun?
I said shotgun.
Shogun, Shogun.
That was my second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're at old business. Board discussion on items related to the golf committee. And I'm going to start on this and I'm going to and actually, and I, you know, Jeff, you've put a lot of time and energy into all of this, and I appreciate it. I know I know that we've expressed gratitude because as we talked about earlier and as Michael has pointed out, this has been a problem for quite some time. And ultimately, we're in a situation that we are trying to make sure that we support our employees as we should. And to the earlier point made, it's interesting that when, you know, we don't support employees or was accused of not doing so anyway or that we lose employees, it's this board's fault. And then at the same token, we met in executive session, we understand two employees' feelings on the situation. And we, and I would say that, you know, I'm going to give the courtesy of of just saying that there are a couple of members of this golf committee, and I think they know who they are. I won't mention their names, but I feel like our our employees have not necessarily been granted that courtesy in the past and the things that they've had to take from that criticism. But I would just say that we're looking at a situation based on our executive session of if if we can't figure out the makeup of the golf committee moving forward with those two individuals present, that we are in a situation that we will have to not have the golf committee meet until those terms expire because, you know, in all fairness to our employees, even if we were to try to force something, which we would never do, we understand their concerns, they would aggrieve it. So, and rightly so. So I'll hand it to you because you've done so much other work on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I I don't want to restate everything that's already been stated, but I I feel there's some key points here. And to say that the last six months has been difficult would be an understatement. And to say that I wish certain things had been done differently over the last three years would be incredibly accurate. I've come to realize, however, though, that this is not just about the golf committee. It's about something much bigger. And for me, it's about the way our town governs itself, how boards, committees, and employees work together for the greater good of Harwich to create and drive a vibrant community. And I want to make this clear as both of my my select board members here made clear, is this is not about the whole committee. This is definitely not about the whole committee. It's it's just a few. And Selectman Howell has had two and a half years to work on this issue, and I've been at it for about six months for a total of about three years that this has been going on. And I think Selectman Howell, I can't speak for him, but after watching countless videos and meetings, I believe that we clearly are on the same page and share the same frustration. If you want to watch September 13, 2022 meeting, which I did last night, start at the 10-minute mark, and that's a reference for just how Dawn and I align with our message. Dawn's message over a year ago and my message for the last six months has been to the golf committee. They're similar and they're consistent. And unfortunately, in three years, nothing has changed, and many would actually argue that it's gotten worse. I would ask our public and our critics, what is a reasonable amount of time our town's employees, and I stress, they're five-star employees, they're just not employees, they are incredible employees doing one hell of a job, should have to endure this difficult work environment, a day-to-day environment of public criticism, condemnation, having to deal with a few committee members who will not follow proper committee policy and procedure, false allegations, publicly being called a liar, and significantly micromanaging in the day-to-day operation of our golf course, to name a few. This may sound harsh, but in fact, it is the truth. All by a few of the golf committee members that are there to simply hold public meetings and make recommendations to the select board. How long would you tolerate that environment at your workplace? So where I see the malfunction is right here with this select board. And I hold myself accountable as well for not supporting our employees. And Julie and Michael have said this, and I'm ashamed. We have not supported our employees in three years. And we've allowed a toxic and unproductive environment to continue for three years. environment to continue for three years. By our very actions or inactions, we, the board, clearly have not done a good job. And for that, I'm truly sorry personally, and I'm thankful for our employees that they hung in there, they ran the golf course, they did their jobs exceptionally well, despite the challenges they had to deal with, the actions of true professionals in my book. At some point along the way, it seems the golf committee has been elevated to a higher level of importance than our employees. That is unacceptable to me and should not be able to continue. And several months ago, just and, and for just cause, this issue breached the threshold for union involvement and potential union grievance. This changes the gravity of this matter significantly. Due to the few members continuing not to follow the recommendations of the select board, the union made it clear to the town several months ago that the employees will not meet with the golf committee, as presently constituted, and in best interest of the employees, should not meet publicly for fear of what some may say next at the next meeting. The select board is now out of options. I do want to say a special thanks to the union steward for working with us to prevent a grievance. You have been a professional from start to finish. What is very unfortunate is that a few of the committee members are creating this disruption for the rest of the committee and our town. If the committee members in question simply resigned way back, or even today, for the greater good, the golf committee would be back in business effective immediately. We have been assured of that. The chair of the golf committee has been told months ago who those golf committees are and that they should consider resignation. So to answer the question of why we are here, I hope it's more clear now to the public and to the critics than before my narrative. Some feel the select board is attacking the golf committee and treating our volunteers with no respect for no reason. Nothing could be farther from the truth. In three years of time, trying to resolve this problem proves just that. I would argue that some members of the golf committee did this to themselves, and now they are being held accountable. We cannot ignore the genesis of this issue, we cannot allow our town's employees to, to have to deal with this situation for one more minute or ever again. Now we have to make a choice, and it is a lose-lose choice. It's unfortunate, but be that as it may, we have to choose between a few on the committee or our town's employees. It's an easy one for me. So Madam Chair, the way I see it is we have three options. Request the committee members in question resign so that the committee can reestablish immediately after the resignations. Send the two committee members to the interview committee for its review, or wait until the terms of the two committee members in question expire in June of two thousand twenty-four, and then let the golf committee reestablish.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Michael?
I don't have a lot to add except for an applause, and I think part of the confusion in, in, in reading Michelle Ryan's resignation, part of the confusion's been how wishy-washy we've been about it. That's not wishy-washy at all, Jeff. And, and two of the three things on that, I'll support B and C, interview committee, which is where they should be brought before. I would hope that they would just resign and the rest of the people on the golf committee would be able to resume meeting, and that maybe we would even get Michelle Ryan back because she's more than qualified to be on there. Sitting at this table for the last eight years plus, it's always the hardest conversation when you have to talk about behavior and you have to talk about committee members, especially when you're dealing with the unofficial mayor of Harwich, who was one of the authors of the, of the charter. But in that amount of time, and in the three years being attached to this, hasn't even brought up changing so that the golf committee's not in the charter. Why we need an advisory committee for golf in the charter is beyond me. I hope that as part of our review, we can figure this out, but more importantly, I hope we can figure out when you have menaces on a committee, how we can remove them. We're never going to remove them inside of the guidelines of, of said Sandra Hall. We're never going to make a decision correct other than one board member. But a charter should have a process, or there should be a process for removal.
Right.
And I'm not sure, you know, the word special employees have been thrown around, egregious action, anyone that watches these meetings will see it. And, and Jeff said a few, I believe there's two employees or two left on the committee. And, and I give this board some credit because this board has done everything at this table. Whereas the last two resignations we had from a longstanding non-member of Cranberry Valley, more or less being run off that committee, that was all done outside of this room. Sure, because if, if it was sitting here, it would be that it went before the interview committee, and it did because I said it should. But to finally get this thing out so the public can know, and the ones that want to comment, you know, on the twelve-year-old platform, Facebook, and argue like we're in high school behind a keyboard, they can continue to do that, but I think any member of the public that actually listened to what Selectboard Member Handler just said, and listened to the fact that this board is protecting employees, is going to have a hard time going on a social media platform. And the ones that do are showing exactly what I said they were tonight, ridiculous.
Right, thank you. And I think that you raised such another good point about social media, and here we are dictating to our kids how they should act on it, and we have adults all over town who actually shouldn't have any kind of membership and any kind of social media page if they can't actually vet information, understand that there's a public venue and it's not behind their keyboard, and it's not to malign this board consistently every single time that we don't feel the same way they do, and try to do it for the public good. So, I, I like the idea of sending it to interview committee if we don't get resignations, so I, I think.
Do we need to make a motion to do that?
So I guess that's the next question is, do we need a motion to actually take action or can we just go ahead for tonight and refer them to interview committee?
You've referred to, to interview committee without votes in the past.
Without votes, right?
Without votes in the past.
Yeah, so I think we can then just make that referral.
And I don't want to do that here publicly and name names, obviously out of respect for the two. So that's something we can do.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Michael?
I would, I would entertain a motion on suspending the meetings until the end of June when the reappointments come up, so that that's on the table.
Right, so that if.
We can change that vote anytime we want, but I don't want any more confusion.
Yeah, all right, let's do that.
I don't, I don't mind bringing two in to the interview committee to have the conversation about do your town and your golf course a favor and resign so that we can, we can move on.
Okay.
But they haven't yet, and I don't believe that they will, so I would rather at least let the public know now. Now that they know the reason that there will be no more meetings until after reappointments in June.
Okay, so that's.
So I'll, I'll make a motion then, if I may.
Sure.
I move that we postpone all golf committee public meetings until June first of two thousand and twenty-four.
Is it June first or June thirtieth?
I'm sorry.
I think June thirtieth.
June thirtieth of two thousand, I'm getting a nod from Emily over there, June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Yeah?
The only other discussion would be, we don't need a motion to bring anyone before the interview committee. I think that's it.
Okay.
Good.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's it, and so now Jeff.
Julie, it just came back to me, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
A question was asked by a resident today, member of the golf course.
Yes.
How they were going to get information or be heard as members of the public.
Right.
And, and I would say that one instance will be capital outlay committee, they are going to meet several times between now and town meeting about the capital plan. That is a great place to ask questions about the capital. And then if fees are proposed by the director of golf to be changed, we will have a public hearing on that in this room by this board.
Right.
And in a public hearing, they all have the right to speak and ask the questions that they have.
That's right.
And then I would say that anyone else could ask questions based on an agenda item to the chair. So the thought that there is no mechanism for the residents to be able to ask these questions is false.
That's right. And, and to your point, putting it on, if, if it's on our agenda, we meet weekly, so there's more opportunity, so. So can we get a motion to go into executive? And we will not be, oh, sorry.
I just have.
Oh, Town Administrator, sorry, I'm blown by that, too.
On behalf of the Town Administrator, I am pleased to announce that we have hired a local building inspector. Mr. Muscatellio has, has some experience in the building field, well, twenty-plus years in the building field, is a construction supervisor, will be joining us by the end of the calendar year, and I am very thankful to say that this completes the community development staff, and we are fully staffed upstairs, first time in a long time.
Right.
Striving to keep it that way.
Yeah, nice, that's excellent. Selectboard members report.
Just a few things. Megan, thank you for filling in and doing what I think was just an amazing job for the time there. I also would like to say thank you to Cindy Williams, Carolyn, and Ginny over at the library. It's just unbelievable to me how much our town has to offer, and if not but for those three, it, it wouldn't look as it looks. So thank you to all three of you for everything you do year-round, day in and day out, we appreciate it.
Michael?
I guess while we're on the thank you.
So thank you, trainee.
Just to shout out, just to shout out to our town clerk and her staff. The memos that you provided related to the special election, the petition article were outstanding, timelines were perfect. I did see that on said social media site you were called out for not acting fast enough. Two weeks was the comment made, made by the unofficial mayor. I don't think she understands, nor do the few that commented, that you actually have a staff and a job to do, and that you can't just drop all of the work you're doing to appeal to them. So I just wanted to recognize that you have the support of this board member and many, many, many members of the public that commented to me about you being the target at this point. So, great job and thank you.
You do have the support of this board member as well. Hate to be left out.
So I'll echo all of those thank yous, and I know that in addition, nobody better say there's nothing to do because there's so much to do. So thanks again, and now if we can go into executive.
Madam Chair, I move that we, that the select board move into executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Harwich Employees Association. I also move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town union, for all town unions, and the chair has determined that open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position, Harwich Employees Association.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Well, I would do it if you do it by roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, right, sorry.